Alright, colleagues, good morning. It's the appointed time. We have a quorum. I call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. The Special Finance Committee meeting for the morning session will now commence. We have two sessions in the morning and the second session will end at twelve thirty-five P M. All questions must be directly related to the estimates of expenditure. If members want to follow up on the written replies of the administration, please quote the reply number. If members cannot follow up on the written replies in the meeting, you may raise supplementary questions by written submissions and submit them to the secretariat before the end of the meeting on that day. The supplementary questions can only be on the written replies of the administration. We have a session on commerce and economic development. I welcome the Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, Mister Adnan Yar and his yield and his team to come to the meeting. And let me also remind members that please be brief with your questions, leave some time for the administration to answer the questions, otherwise I will just direct the administration to give a written reply to members' questions. Thank you. Secretary, please. Chairman. I am going to briefly introduce the key tasks under the C E D B in the current financial year. There are four areas. First, it is to complement the National Fourteen Five Year Plan in enhancing Hong Kong's status as an international trade center. The second and third focuses are respectively about our work in promoting participation in and contribution to the Belt and Road Initiative and the support for Hong Kong to develop into a regional I P trading center. Fourthly, I will mention other measures to create stronger impetus for Hong Kong's economic development. To reinforce Hong Kong's status as an international trade center, we will continue to expand Hong Kong's economic and trade network, especially in strengthening our economic and trade relations with emerging markets, including the establishment of Hong Kong Overseas E T Os, Economic and Trade Offices and Consultant Offices in emerging markets, as well as forging free trade agreements, F T As and investment agreements, I As with economies of good potentials in light of the enormous economic potential of countries along the Belt and Road. The Financial Secretary announced in the twenty twenty-four to twenty-five budget that the government was planning to establish E T Os in Riyadh and Kuala Lumpur, and we are vigorously following up on the details. At the same time, Invest Hong Kong will also set up consultant offices respectively in Cairo, the capital of Egypt, and Izmir, the third largest city in Turkey within twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, to bring in capital and enterprises from high-potential emerging countries in the Middle East and North Africa. Furthermore, the Hong Kong Trade Development Council, H K T D C, will also set up consultant offices in Dhaka, the capital city of Bangladesh, and Phnom Penh, the capital city of Cambodia, in twenty twenty-four to twenty-five to strengthen trade promotion in emerging countries. In the past six months, we have signed I As respectively with Turkey and Bahrain. Hong Kong has so far signed eight F T As with twenty economies and twenty-four I As with thirty-three economies. We will continue to actively take forward our work on this front, including the negotiations of an F T A with Peru and I As with Saudi Arabia and Bangladesh. In line with the trend of mainland manufacturing enterprises extending their production supply chains abroad, it is the goal of the government to develop Hong Kong into a multinational supply chain management center. Hong Kong has the capacity to offer full-fledged and comprehensive professional support services such as consulting services, trade financing and corporate training to mainland enterprises to meet their overseas business needs, to attract mainland manufacturing enterprises to establish in Hong Kong. C E D B in coordination with team Hong Kong organizations, including Invest Hong Kong, will strengthen the support work and work together to study implementation details. Starting from twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, an additional recurrent provision of around ninety million dollars in phases has been allocated to Invest Hong Kong to strengthen its work and Hong Kong's investment promotion network in the mainland and overseas. In twenty twenty-three, Invest Hong Kong assisted three hundred eighty-two companies to set up or expand their businesses in Hong Kong, an increase of twenty-seven percent compared with twenty twenty-two. The mainland was the main place of origin with one hundred and thirty-six companies. The United Kingdom, the United States, Singapore, and Australia ranked second to fifth respectively with a total number of one hundred and twenty-two companies. They have brought in direct investment of over sixty-one point six billion dollars and created more than four thousand one hundred jobs in Hong Kong. The result of twenty twenty-three well exceeded the performance indicators set out in the twenty twenty-two policy address on a per rata basis. Invest Hong Kong will continue to work hard to achieve its targets. According to the understanding of the government, members of the R C A P, Regional Comprehensive Economic Partnership, have yet to conclude discussions on the procedures for accession of new members. Trade with R C A P members, all of whom are important trading partners of Hong Kong amount to around seventy percent of our total merchandise trade and approximately forty percent of our total trade and services. Hong Kong has all it takes to join R C A P and is through our advantages as a logistics, trade and financial center able to further enhance regional supply chains and contribute to R C A P. We will continue to maintain close liaison with the trade and economic departments of our C A P members and carry out lobbying work through various platforms with a view to actively striving for early accession to R C A P. Hong Kong will continue to give full play to our role as the functional platform for the Belt and Road Initiative, proactively supporting and detailing our work with the latest strategies of our country in the next golden decade. The government will organize the ninth Belt and Road Summit this year and will launch the inaugural Belt and Road Festival at the same time with a view to furthering Hong Kong's collaboration with B N R countries in a wide range of areas. The Belt and Road Office, B R O, will also organize a number of outbound missions, including a joint mission mission with the Ministry of Commerce next month to go global with mainland enterprises, assisting Hong Kong enterprises and professionals to tap more overseas business opportunities. The B R O also plans to continue to organize visits for enterprises of B N R countries in Hong Kong to visit the mainland using Hong Kong as the service base. It will also continue to organize interface sessions and promote Hong Kong's participation in and contribution to the B N R initiative through diversified channels. On regional I P trading center, the average number of standard patent registrations granted by the I P D Intellectual Property Department in the past three years exceeding ten thousand each year, showing an enormous market potential on I P trading in Hong Kong. The government will continue to protect I P rights and promote I P trading, leveraging our advantages in legal, taxation and professional services to develop Hong Kong into a regional I P trading center. In particular, on tenth of April twenty twenty-four, we have just introduced a bill into the L E C C O to amend the inland revenue ordinance to implement the Patent Box Tax Incentive, which will substantially reduce the tax rate for qualifying profits derived from I P, mainly includes patents to five percent, with a view to encouraging enterprises to devote more resources to R and D and transform the R and D outcomes to products and services with market potential, thereby promoting more I P commercialization and trading activities. We hope to have the support of the L E C C O so that this initiative, which was first announced in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, can be implemented as soon as possible. It will also support scientific researchers and innovators to make use of the I P regime to protect their inventions and guide them in launching their technologies to market. Through our country's participation in a dedicated program of the W I P, a World Intellectual Property Organization, more than one hundred T I S Cs Technology and Innovation Support Centers have been established on mainland. We will actively prepare for the establishment of a T I S C in Hong Kong. In this regard, the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget has set aside forty-five million dollars to support the Hong Kong Productivity Council, H K P C, in establishing the center and maintaining its operation in the first three years. On nurturing patent talents, following the announcement in the twenty twenty-three policy address, the I P D would take the lead in discussing with stakeholders to plan for the introduction of regulatory arrangements for local patent agent services. The twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget has announced that the government will allocate an additional funding of twelve million dollars in total, approximately to the I P D over the next three years to implement this measure, with a view to enhancing the professionalism of patent services. To put into effect the measure of enhancing the substantive examination capability under the O G P Original Grant Patent System announced in the twenty twenty-two policy address, the government will also continue to strengthen and expand I P D's patent examiner team with a view to acquiring institutional autonomy in conducting substantive patent examination in twenty thirty. S M Es make significant contributions to Hong Kong's economy. The government has been providing support measures like the S M E Financing Guarantee Scheme, F S F G, as a dedicated fund on branding, upgrading and domestic sales, the BUD Fund, to help S M Es address the liquidity issue and enhance their competitiveness. Both schemes are well received. Among others, E C BUD, as announced in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, has been launched in June twenty twenty-three to expedite the fetching of designated applications. Having regard to the latest economic situation of Hong Kong and needs of trade, the Financial Secretary announced in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget that the government will extend the application period for the eighty percent and ninety percent guarantee products under the F S F G as for two years to end March twenty twenty-six and inject five hundred million dollars into the BUD Fund to sustain its operation and introduce e-commerce E C to assist S M Es in implementing e-commerce projects on the mainland in view of the vibrant development of the mainland e-commerce market. In view of the enormous opportunities in the mainland market, the H K T D C will continue to provide multi-pronged support support to help Hong Kong enterprises tap into the domestic sales market, including enhancing the services of its Go G B A One-Stop platform. The H K T D C has already expanded the Go G B A Business Support Centers Network to cover all nine mainland cities in the G B As announced in the twenty twenty-two policy address and will further set up a center in Fuzhen in Q two of twenty twenty-four. The Chief Executive announced in the twenty twenty-three policy address that the government will establish an advisory panel on silver economy. Currently, relevant experts and I are studying how to unleash the business potential of the elderly market and meet the aspirations and needs of the elderly. On telecommunications, five G coverage has now reached over ninety percent of the Hong Kong population and achieving coverage of ninety-nine percent in C B D's core business districts. The government will continue to enhance telecommunications infrastructure to prepare for future development of more advanced mobile communications technology, including the implementation of the proposal announced in the twenty twenty-four policy address on promoting five G development by amending the telecommunications ordinance and formulating relevant guidelines to allow access for mobile network operators, M and O, to install mobile communications facilities, as well as commitments made in the twenty twenty-three policy address on expediting the expansion of mobile network infrastructure in rural and remote areas through subsidies, proactively coordinating with relevant organizations to enhance five G network capacity. At public make public event venue and conducting spectrum auctions within this year to provide a total of five hundred ten megahertz spectrum for mo- public mobile communication services. Also, M and O's who acquire the spectrum in these bands will benefit from the measure mentioned in the last year's budget and took effect January this year through the amended inland revenue ordinance. Chairman, these are my main points. My colleagues and I will be pleased to answer questions from members. Thank you. I can see that seventeen members have pressed the request to speak button. I will now read out the order in which members are going to speak. For members' reference, Mister Jeffrey Lam, Mister Frankie Yig, Mister Yuen Kong, Mister Andrew Lam, Mister Sunny Tan, Mister Yu Pat Lung, Doctor Tan Yue Hung, Mister Robert Lee, Misses Regina Ip, Miss Yong Ho Yan, Professor William Wong, Mister Dennis Lung, Mister Adrian Ho, Mister Yim Kong, Doctor Chan Man Kong, Mister Sheng Ha Long and Mister Lu Cheng Hong. Four minutes questions and answers included. First, Mister Jeffrey Lam.
Thank you, Chairman. We can see that the administration has been working very hard to promote Hong Kong. But the general public may not see all the efforts of the administration. Some people come to Hong Kong for investment, but they do not want to invest in a high-profile manner. They may also invest in private businesses. So, we don't completely understand the investment of um family offices or we are not completely familiar with this situation. How many have established presence in Hong Kong? In Hong Kong, we have a lot of mega events. The Hong Kong T D C holds seven mega exhibitions, including Hong Kong Fashion Week. Next week, we have the largest gift of um gifts exhibitions, attracting many buyers and people from all over the world. I've also done a lot of work on promoting Hong Kong. Many buyers have come to Hong Kong. They find that the situation in Hong Kong differs from the reports they have seen. Hong Kong is a bubbly place, is a very happy city. So I'd like to take these two weeks to work more on this front. I thank the Hong Kong Tourism Board for arranging for Victoria Tours to let them know more about Hong Kong. Regarding Belt and Road, in the past year, there were many activities. I think this is indeed good. But can the administration tell us more about it? Apart from bringing in people to Hong Kong, how many businesses have we got? After all, the profits are for the benefit of Hong Kong. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Lam. The number of people coming to Hong Kong for investment and the um convention and exhibition industry, as well as the Belt and Road Initiative. Regarding investment, a total of three hundred and eighty-two have come to Hong Kong for investment, including Japan, Singapore, the U S and so on. We have surpassed our K P I's. That is attracting over one thousand one hundred and thirty enterprises to Hong Kong. In the first three months, one hundred and fifty enterprises have established presence in Hong Kong. At this rate, we will definitely reach our target. I will invite my colleagues to give you more information in a moment regarding the convention and exhibition industry, C and E industry. We have recovered much on the businesses, about seventy percent to eighty percent of the pre-pandemic level. Compact Corn, K Corn and so on, these are very much popular. They saw a large attendance. They are very much well received. There are also many participants in other events as well. Regarding Belt and Road Offices, last year, when the chief executive led a deputation to um Southeast Asia and the Middle East, we have signed many M O U M O U's that is over fifty, that is hydrogen fuel vehicles and other initiatives as well. I'd like to ask Invest Hong Kong colleague to give you more information. Then I will um ask my colleague to give you more information. Miss Alpha Lau and other colleagues as well will take your questions.
Thank you, member, for your suggestion. Regarding attracting enterprises and talents, we have covered both family offices as well as enterprises. When enterprises are introduced into Hong Kong, we have a tally of the figures, as the secretary mentioned. After conducting businesses in Hong Kong, when they find that the business environment is favorable, we know that the figure has been increasing, but we do not have kept, um I mean, we do not have a tally of the figures. Some may want to come to Hong Kong. They'd like to use Hong Kong as a springboard into the mainland market. Or some mainland enterprises would like to come to Hong Kong using Hong Kong as a platform. But then they do want to stay low pro- low profile as a result of the geopolitical tensions. Last year, Invest Hong Kong brought in sixty-one billion dollars or so of businesses into Hong Kong. We can see that we are making strides in this regard. For the enterprises brought in by Invest Hong Kong, the secretary mentioned three hundred and eighty-two. In the first quarter of this year, the number stands as one hundred and fifty. Many people come to Hong Kong. They lead delegations to conduct a visit tours. For example, Indonesia, a giant has come to Hong Kong for a visit. Businesses from Malaysia also came to Hong Kong. From twenty twenty to the first quarter of this year, a total of twenty-seven companies has have come to Hong Kong. So we can see that we have achieved good results in relation to publicity. Regarding family offices, we don't have a figure as we do not need to approve these applications. We have conducted a study, but then we have already racked a total of two thousand and seven hundred family offices. Hong Kong T D C. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Lam, for your question. Regarding the C and E industry, we are glad to see that starting from twenty twenty-three, from March, is making a recovery, as at the end of last year, it had recovered to seventy percent to eighty percent of the pre-pandemic level. In the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, it has resumed some ninety percent of the pre-pandemic level. We are glad to see that the um enterprises all over the world have come back to Hong Kong. A total of one hundred and ninety companies have returned to Hong Kong. That's a figure this year. As the secretary mentioned, we have the jewelry exhibition. It was held in March this year. I'd like to share with members a success story. It's a jewel jewelry company from Saudi Arabia. In our convention and exhibition venue, they have secured three companies. The orders totaled ten million U S dollars. So we can see some people have already returned to Hong Kong. They conduct business in Hong Kong. We'll continue to step up publicity and we'd like to attract enterprises or companies all over the world to come back to Hong Kong. So they can also share the results or the business environment with their counterparts. That's one of the way of telling the good stories of Hong Kong. I allow the administration to give us a more detailed reply as it paints quite a general picture of the situation. Mister Frankie Yig, I'd like to follow up on O two one. It's about trade single window. In twenty twenty-six, more work will be rolled out. Of course, my industry want to see the commissioning of the trade single window, T S W. So we hope the T S W can be commissioned as soon as possible to align with the development of e-commerce, which is very robust. When the T S W is commissioned in Hong Kong, it's very important to have interfacing with the T S W in the mainland market. Afterwards, we should align with those in Asian countries. I'd like to hear from the administration in your plan, starting from twenty twenty-six. Are you ready to align with the initiatives of Asian, I mean, Asian countries? Next. O eight four, that is about R C A P. In the administration's reply, it mentioned that the administration has been working very hard to seek accession to R C A P, but we haven't yet seen results. How is the administration going to follow up on it? When will Hong Kong be able to seek accession to R C A P? When overseas enterprises would like to establish presence in Hong Kong, they need to avoid double tax, double taxation agreements. Comparing with other places, Ireland, Singapore, they have a total of seventy or eighty C D T As we are lacking behind. So what is the government's plan? In the administration's reply, it mentioned the F S T B has a target of starting commercial negotiations with four to six countries or regions. So is it under the purview of the F S T B or the C E D B?
Secretary. Thank you, member. We are in the third phase of the T S W. We'd like to launch the T S W as soon as possible. In a moment, Deputy Deputy Secretary will give you more information. Earlier on, there were some hiccups, but we are going to make up for the lost time. Regarding R C A P, it was um firmed up in early twenty twenty-two. But it takes the approval of all member states in order to allow the accession of other countries. The internal approval procedure were only completed in June twenty twenty-three. The application period will take eighteen months, after which if the procedure is smooth enough, then it will be approved. The procedure won't um be completed until June twenty twenty-three. So in twenty twenty-three, there was a meeting about new member states. But they haven't yet finished all the formalities, hence the delay. Asian countries are very much supportive of our accession to R C A P. Australia, New Zealand, Japan, Korea and our country have been engaging in different meetings. In World Trade Organization meetings, we also have bilateral meetings in which we seek their support. Our country would like to urge all member states to complete the formalities so that Hong Kong can seek accession to R C A P successfully. We expect by the end, by the end of this year, we will be able to gain accession to R C A P. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak, Mister Yuen Kong. Thank you, Chair. My first question relates to zero two four on C E D B's expenditure. From twenty twenty-two, one point eight billion dollars, it has become five billion dollars now and in twenty twenty-three and then seven point one billion dollars in twenty twenty-four. From the C E D B's reply, it is because they have a higher cash flow requirement to pay out to the one hundred percent or eighty percent or ninety percent guarantee products under the S M E Financi- Financing Guarantee Scheme. And sixty percent of them actually went to debt debts. financing guarantee scheme. And sixty percent of them actually went to bad debts. And seventy percent in the year after would be to pay the expenditure relating to bad debts. So you are saying that the assumed bad debt rate is twelve percent, sixteen percent, and twenty odd percent. But right now you actually have the lower cumulative default rates, four point two percent, two point seven, and six point eight percent respectively for the various percentages. While the percentage may be lower, it is still quite damaging. So I want to ask what the actual figures are. So how can you also minimize the incurrence of bad debts? My second question relates to a question asked by you on zero zero eight. On C N E exhibitors. Uh, you asked about the number of applications for the incentive scheme for recurrent exhibitions. The reply given by the administration was quite fake. It is said that the information is commercial information. Organization organizers do not have to report to the government. So we do not have the respective numbers. I'm very disappointed in the reply given. Mice industry is very important to Hong Kong in commercial development as well as development of tourism. Will the bureau consider gather more data in future for the development and analyses of the industry? Thank you. Two questions. Secretary, please. Thank you. I'll have Miss Candy Lau, a deputy secretary for Commerce and Economic Development, answer one of the questions. And I will let Mister Johan Wong, another deputy secretary, answer the question on the mice industry. Who's going to speak first? Uh, it would be me. Thank you. The total commitment of the S M E financing scheme for eighty percent and ninety percent guaranteed products, they will be extended to end March twenty twenty six. So that the total commitment will increase by ten billion dollars. As for the total number of bad debts, as said by the member, indeed, the assumed rates are higher than the actual rates. For one hundred percent products, the bad debt rate is eight percent, excuse me, six point eight percent. Depending on the operation situation of enterprises, there may be changes. We also have a principal or moratorium arrangement. We believe that will also be a factor. We will keep in view the situation closely, however. As for whether we can control the incurrence of bad debts, as I said earlier, there are different factors at play. But we understand that enterprises face difficulties at the moment. That's why we have provided different options for them so that they can repay the loans, especially the principles slowly, so as to minimize the incurrence rate of bad debts. As for the keeping of data of mice industry. Thank you, Chair. As said in the reply, we have private exhibitors in exhibition, so do we do not have direct figures. But for example, since first of July twenty twenty three, we have a one point four billion dollar incentive scheme for recurrent exhibitions. I can share with members some figures from that scheme. It was launched on first of July twenty twenty three. As at end of February twenty twenty four, we have approved sixty two applications. And the incentives dispersed was approximately two hundred and eighty million dollars. And for each exhibition, it would be approximately four million dollars. And starting from first of July twenty twenty three, we have seen from our records, we have approximately eighty two thousand exhibitors. And thirty thousand odd of them are local, fifty thousand odd of them are non-local exhibitors. These are not comprehensive figures. But because they have applied for grants to from us, we have some figures and from our records, there were one point three million visitors. Indeed, we do not have comprehensive figures as the member said. But because we process applications under the incentive scheme for recurrent exhibitions, we do have some figures. Well, perhaps you can provide these uh figures to the member after the meeting. Uh, Chair, let me add something. We would definitely take note of the member's suggestion and see what we can do better with the gathering of data and analyses of such data. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mister Andrew Lam. Thank you. I would like to follow up on one two four and zero one six. One two four relates to E T Os and O A Cs, how we can try to attract more enterprises from the figures in the past three years. I do see various kinds of information. I would like to follow up on a particular point from the figures. If we look at the dedicated teams for attracting businesses and talents, they were only established in twenty twenty two. From the figures alone, I can't tell how the dedicated teams performed in terms of the attraction of businesses in the dollars as well as in the numbers. I want to ask what challenges do the teams face at the moment? Are there any plans for the dedicated teams to be more powerful? That's my first question. My second question relates to zero one six. In the reply, it is said that Hong Kong will be developed into a multinational supply chain management center. I do very much support this direction that the administration is taking. And when it comes to the attraction of businesses and talents, what sectors would you focus on? I don't see the direction or the interrelation from the figures. I want to also know more about as a multinational supply chain management center. We do have multiple initiatives under that. We have one-stop hub and so on. But what deficiencies has the administration identified of Hong Kong so far? And as we said before, it is very easy to make a company registration in Hong Kong. It is easy for companies to enter or exit the market. We may not have comprehensive records as a result. But I want the administration to really know what is happening in the market at the moment. Otherwise, it will just be all talk without the relevant data for analyses. Thank you. Thank you. All right, secretary. Two questions. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mister Andrew Lam, for your questions. We are just starting with the initiative of the multinational supply chain management center. I'll let Mister Johan Wong answer the questions. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mister Lam, for your questions on the dedicated teams question. As at end twenty twenty two, these teams were established. And before, E T Os had their investment and promotion units. As at end twenty twenty two, we have enhanced these teams' function and have transformed them into the dedicated teams. What challenges do we face? As the member said, I can share with you some figures. Before, when we are trying to attract businesses and talents. For example, starting from twenty twenty one, we were hit by the pandemic. And we were hit in terms of various industries development. For example, for tourism, we had figures drop with our team members' efforts. We have seen a minor increase in twenty twenty two. In twenty twenty three, after we have enhanced our work. Well, actually, as at end twenty twenty two, after we have established the dedicated teams, we have tried our very best to recruit students graduating from top one hundred universities. We are confident that in twenty twenty four and onwards, with the resumption of normal travel and the removal of restrictions, we can catch up with the progress that we have been lagging behind. As for supply chain, Hong Kong has its advantages in this regard. We have the strong support of the country and we are connected to the world. Mainly mainland companies want to go global and their first choice would be Hong Kong. Making use Hong, making use of Hong Kong as a springboard. We are currently studying in relation to mainland companies wanting to go global, what the pain points are and what their concerns are. We are gathering data internally at the moment. And we understand that they have some problems with trade financing in our initial studies. And they also have some concerns that we are already aware of. After exploring them, we will see what measures we can implement. All right, uh, you, I hope you can also take note of the member's suggestion on how to gather market intelligence better. Thank you, Chair. I think with the single window, we can gather much more information. And for mainland companies going global, they have their productions in the mainland, and this can be beneficial to Hong Kong. And we can collect such data through the trade single window. Thank you. Mister Sunny Ten, thank you. I would like to ask questions about uh my own questions, oh eight, zero two, oh eight, three. I think the administration has been doing well with insurance. I want to ask about the progress of the risk-sharing arrangement for domestic sales and how banks can participate even more in the arrangement. Also, how we can promote such arrangement to ASEAN markets? We do have some credit checking services available to ASEAN countries at the moment, but can we do more? Let me also say this. Before, we have worked on supply chain. And we have buyers set up their procurement centers in Hong Kong. They will procure various kinds of services, financial services, procurement services, and so on. That's why we have seen a lot of merchandise sellers in Shangshou Pool, such as those selling textiles. Some have left, however, but we do want to try to recruit them back here or the mainland. We also want to respond to the concerns of S M Es. But we also should take note of the needs of the larger enterprises because without them, they will not be able to provide steam to the development of the economy. So we need to make sure, for example, there should be digitalization of the declaration process of the customs. We also need to consider that there are differences with selling channels at the moment. So we really need to implement measures in response to the changes. Now, with trademarks, will you consider promoting live streaming studios to other places for e-commerce? Because the western market is not doing so well at the moment, let's be honest, and it that's why we really need to do more in terms of that to provide more support to those who focus on the western markets. I believe there are three questions and you are short of time. The secretary per- perhaps selects certain questions that they are going to answer.
I'd like to first of all answer the question about e-commerce. E-commerce has a vast market, worldwide. Um, e-commerce market has a share of um five trillion U S dollars or so. The growth will be fifty percent. The mainland market is seeing exponential growth, that is two point five times. How can we make a good platform to attract quality products? There are some technical difficulties, including promotion, platform, and so on. We've had a meeting and we have preliminary views. Will we promote it to other countries? Yes, we will. But then we'll first try out with mainland. If it is successful, we will promote it to other markets around the world. For other questions, I will ask my colleague to answer it. Whereas if there is no enough time, we will follow up on members' reply in a written manner. Thank you, Chairman. I thank the support of banks. Some banks take part in it. Some banks asked us, asked us whether they could take part in it. In the future, if the scheme is expanded to South Asian markets, the banks said that they'd like to first of all see mature operation in the mainland market before being expanded into the Asian, I mean, the South Asian market. Next, Mister Peridu.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my own question, one one oh. We all know how important mice is to our economy. In twenty nineteen, the Hong Kong Tourism Board showed that the mice industry brought um one point six nine million overnight visitors last year. It was one point three million dollar, well, I mean, one point three million overnight visitors. We can say that the mice industry has already fully resumed um resumed to normality. The incentive scheme for recurrent exhibitions was launched last year, which greatly boosted local market. I have to commend the efforts on the Hong Kong T D C and C E D B. I am concerned about the venues on the C N E industry. All over the years, we rely on Asia Expo and Hong Kong C E C to stage C N E industry events. As for new mice events, they are no longer limited to B two B. There are even B two C entertainment consumption. There are different scenarios. So we need more and more space. From the administration's reply, the expansion of Asia World Expo, One China North, and so on, it does not seem that we are making progress. For phase two of Asia World Expo, we understand that the infection control center is still using the venue, but we can't wait indefinitely. we understand that the infection control center is still using the venue, but we can't wait indefinitely. We can't wait infinitely. When can we take back the land for development? Has the administration considered having more C N E venues in, for example, the northern metropolis? Is it possible? The administration needs to assess for the Kai Tak Sports Park. Can it serve the function of C N E industry venues so that we can support the robust development of the mice industry? It is very important to the local economy. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mister Peridu. Regarding the expansion of the mice industry, we have already mapped out the general direction. I'd like to invite Deputy Secretary to give you more information. Mister Wong, please. As mentioned in the reply, mainly the development is in One Chi North and Airport. If two expansion schemes are successful, I mean, right now, the area is one hundred and fifty eight hectares. If the expansion scheme, scheme is successful, we can see the expansion of forty percent. For the infection control center, we are looking into the arrangements. When we have a consensus, we will take it forward. Regarding the one in One Chi, we have already sought support from the Latchcall. We have already received funding in relation to the re-provisioning scheme of the fire station, I mean, the Kuan Wan Station in One Chi North. The project is quite complex. So it's going to take a longer time. Member mentioned some new developments such as Kai Tak and the Northern Metropolis. We'll definitely retain flexibility when we have appropriate venues. Businessmen as well as exhibitors are keeping a close watch on the local market. When there are suitable venues, they will definitely consider these venues. There's, I mean, there's a new trend after the epidemic. Offline, we are recovering quite well. Regarding online, we still need to pay more attention to the online recovery. Next, Doctor Tan Yuhong.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on one, two, nine. It's my own question. It's about E T O, Economic and Trade Offices. I have three questions. In general, in overseas E T Os, there are five officers sent from Hong Kong and about a dozen staff members locally. What is the establishment of the E T O? I'd like to ask about the manpower and resource allocation of Belt and Road Initiative. The C E D B and the E T O are our gateway to the world. We have offices in developed economies. In ASEAN and the Middle East, we are continuing with our estab- establishment of offices in these areas. We are seeing more and more important roles in these areas. ASEAN and Middle East offices, what is their manpower expenditure? Is it enough? This is my second question. Regarding my third question, we have E T O office. There's an office for the Invest Hong Kong as well as the T D C as well. How do these three organizations step up coordination in terms of attracting enterprises and talents? How can they work with one another?
Questions about manpower, arrangements, and establishment. Thank you, Secretary. Regarding Belt and Road Initiative, as mentioned in the reply, in Saudi Arabia and Indonesia, there are E T Os. We need to set up E T Os in order to attract enterprises and talents to come to Hong Kong. As I mentioned, in Ismir in Turkey and Cairo in Egypt, we are going to set up E T Os. That's how we can step up our efforts in this connection. I'd like to invite Mister Wong, Deputy Secretary, to give you more information.
Thank you, Chairman. In our reply, we also mentioned for the newly set up E T Os, the manpower establishment and arrangements are broadly the same. That is, five officers sent from Hong Kong and about twelve locally engaged staff members. Of course, the operation and the arrangements of different E T Os may vary from one another. It's not set in stone. That's not thirty million dollars for each E T O annually. There may be upward or downward adjustments depending on the actual circumstances. Apart from the um, E T Os in advanced economies such as U S and Europe, we are starting to set up E T Os in Belt and Road countries as well as other regions. Even if they are not E, E T Os, the Hong Kong T D C and Invest Hong Kong will also set up offices of a smaller operation scale in this area in order to enlarge the commercial and investment network. In addition to E T Os, we also have Invest Hong Kong and Hong Kong T D C working in these regions. They work together. They are the official organizations representing Hong Kong. There are also government-to-government exchanges, and we need to conduct all these exchanges through the E T Os. Hong Kong T D C and, and Invest Hong Kong are responsible for the developments of entrepreneurs and investors in Hong Kong. There's clear division of labor, but rest assured, for these three offices, we work well with one another. We not only bring in enterprises, we not only go global, there's also much room for our collaboration, so we work well with one another. Next, Mister Robert Lee. I'd like to follow up on C E D B one, four, four. It's about investment and promotion. In the administration's reply, it mentions opening up the mainland market and capitalizing on the business opportunities. There's also the um, Capital Investment entry, entrance scheme, C I E S. The reply also touches upon E T Os and the sixteen consultant offices in key locations not covered by the dedicated teams. So I'd like to know in terms of helping Hong Kong enterprises, apart from opening up mainland markets and Belt and Road markets, there will also be small group tours. So how do you select industries and participants? Indeed, there are many people who'd like to join this scheme. How do you make sure these study tours will be successful in conducting business? Through seminars, talks? How can we help the SMEs to get started in terms of conducting businesses? When they're strapped for resources, how can they start their businesses? Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. Well, it relates to many aspects. I'll first have the Commissioner for Belt and Road answer how they, we are helping companies go global. Thank you. The B R O has multiple missions this year, including a joint mission with the Ministry of Commerce. Helping mainland enterprises to go global. We'll go to Portugal, Kazakhstan, and Xinjiang. We will also go to Southeast Asia and the Middle East. Helping SMEs tap into the potential of the Belt and Road market. We also have some roving demonstrations at the Belt and Road Summit. We want a wide representation of different industries. Apart from working with associations, we are also working with SME platforms. Youth, associations, academic institutions, such as universities. We will make use of the theme of Belt and Road, and we have held talks, and we will continue to hold talks before we have had three to four each, for each talk, there will be companies who will share their success experience with the attendees. And the Belt and Road Summit, we do want to expand our reach. We want to engage more professionals and other sectors, which is why we will have a roving exhibition this year in the territory to talk about the history and development of the Belt and Road Initiative. As I said earlier, we collaborate with multiple stakeholders. We also work with the H K T D C and Invest Hong Kong in our work. Thank you. Mister Regina Ip.
Thank you, Chair. I want to ask about zero, one, seven. That is my question on wine. The administration has provided some figures. In terms of duty in the past five years, oh, actually, in twenty twenty three alone, how much has the administration collected in tax revenue? And were there any fluctuations in the past five years? Secretary, please.
I'll let Mister Andy Lam, Deputy Secretary, answer this question. Thank you. Deputy Secretary, please. Turn on his microphone, please. Thank you, Chair. On duty collection, we need to ask the F S T B for such figures, and we can provide such information after the meeting. You ha- you don't have such information on hand, right? Yes, because it relates to the F S T B's functions. Thank you. I think such information is very important. It is relevant to tax revenue. But then I think we should lower the duty rate so as to facilitate Hong Kong's development into a wine auction hub as well as a wine distribution and trading hub. That's why I wanted to ask about the figures in relation to wine duty. So please, the administration provide such information to me after the meeting. Alright? Secretary. Thank you. We will give a written reply after we have gathered such data from the relevant bureau. Thank you. I also want to ask about E T Os. The reply is B one, one, oh, eight, C E D B one, one, eight. There is some information about the expenditure of E T Os. The total expenditure incurred, the highest one would be the Switzerland-Geneva E T O. I believe there are trade officers there as well as administrative officers who would conduct negotiations with the professional organizations. London takes up a much lower expenditure now. It used to be much higher before, because it used to be a transshipment country. I don't think we need that many people there now, because you simply can't convince the anti-China destabilizing forces otherwise. So why not just deploy less people there when it's no longer necessary? Thank you. Deputy Secretary.
Thank you. The London E T O not only deals with the work in London, it also handles matters relating to Northern, Central, and Eastern Europe. So, the particular region may ha- may be less important to us now, but we do see some emerging markets in the Europe as well that we attach great importance to. As we said earlier, we target also emerging markets such as Central and Eastern Europe other than just advanced economies. So we have also liaised with Dublin and other regions. We will review our distribution of work to see what we need. We have reviewed before our division of work, and we consider the current arrangement is appropriate. Well, I think they misunderstood my question. Well, the Berlin E T O does not have to look, work at, work for matters relating to Central Eastern Europe. And I understand that the London E T O has moved to us, another premises. What happened to the original premises? Did you buy or rent the property? Well, right now, the London E T O does not operate out of, uh, an official office, uh, or there is no official residence. The staff members live in their own accommodation. Thank you. Alright, thank you. Miss Yong Hua Yan, I want to ask about zero, five, five and zero, five, six about unfair trading practices. We have dealt with complaints relating to such before. And before the Consumer Council's arrangement is less than satisfying or less than satisfactory. There aren't that many options that the Consumer Council can provide. If people want to the Customs and Excise Department, it will take long, and they will not be, they may not be able to recover the money that they lost. Mister Kenneth Lung asked about the Consumer Council's work in the question as well. Many members of the public, after having made a complaint to Consumer Council, would resort to public opinion, perhaps complaining to TV programs to recover their losses. What can the administration do more to help these victims? So that they don't have to go through these alternative pathways? Another question that I have is on the G B A. We see a lot of people going to the mainland for consumption during the weekends. Can we make better use of G B A standards and the brands in the Bay Area? We can perhaps introduce such brands into Hong Kong to retain people to consume in Hong Kong. We do have a platform for the promotion of G B A standards. How will the administration promote this platform so that Hong Kong can become a hub for products making use of G B A standards? This will in turn facilitate the development of G B A standards in
This will in turn facilitate the development of G B A standards in Hong Kong as well as attraction of more brands to come to Hong Kong. Thank you. Secretary, please. I'll let Ms. Candy Lau answer one question. And then I'll let another one of my colleagues answer the other question. Thank you. On the Consumer Council's work. The Consumer Council has been dutifully exercising its functions to follow up on complaints made by members of the public on quality of goods and services. The Council has been actively following up on trends of complaints. If certain companies are often complained about, the Council will follow up with them. And if they see any criminal breaches, referrals would be made to law enforcement agencies. On unfair trading practices, it would be this Customs and Excise Department as well as the Consumer Council working in this area. Consumer Council would take the role of a mediator and the Customs and Excise Department would take the role of an enforcer of the law. Through taking enforcement actions, we have achieved a deterrent effect on unfair trading practices. The C N E D has also done a lot in education. It is observed that upon resumption of normal travel, there has there have been more complaints from visitors. That's why the C N E D has taken more operations to reduce the figures of complaints. On the question about Bay Area standards, please provide a written reply after the meeting. Thank you. Professor William Wong. I want to follow up on zero nine one, zero nine two and zero nine three. The first question, zero nine one. The reply given by the administration says that for combating fraudulent calls and messages, some telco providers have provided packages in relation to call management and have reminded users that some calls may be suspicious calls. Should we provide this particular service to elderly persons? Also, in the OFCA's website. OFCA has encouraged people to make use of call filtering apps, but these are commercially operated and there are ads on the apps. In order to get rid of the ads, users would have to pay. Will OFCA make its own call filtering app as a result? Not only will it be more authoritative, users do not have to be disturbed by ads. On question, excuse me, reply number zero nine two. It's on the development of I Ps and patent agent services. It is said that regulatory arrangements for local patent agent ser- services will be introduced to enhance the professionalism and support the development of the relevant services. How long will it take for the administration to do this? And how will you nurture these patent agents? My last question relates to reply number zero nine four for the one point four billion incentive scheme for recurring exhibitions. In order to have more international exhibitions in Hong Kong, this scheme was introduced. I want to ask, we this scheme will be extended to other centers because right now we only have one center tackled. Thank you. I think there are three questions. Perhaps the Secretary can select one question for uh their answer.
Thank you Chairman. Regarding scam calls, I'd like to ask Mister Leng, Director General of Communications to give you more information. Mister Leng. Regarding the call management, we have been encouraging mainland mobile communication operators to provide free services to senior citizens, particularly those who have monthly subscription plans. We believe more and more operators will be doing so. Right now, for those above the age of sixty-five, the services are free. We are encouraging operators to reduce the age to sixty in order to benefit more people in the community. In view of the many services in the market, we are already encouraging operators to provide similar call management services. So we don't want to duplicate our resources to um require some operators to provide such services. Next, Mister Dennis Leng, I'd like to follow up on my own questions. Zero five two and five three. My questions are about patent box. In one A, I asked about provision, but the administration did not give me any figures. For the other question, the administration is going to set up Technology and Innovation Support Center under WIPO, World Intellectual Property Organization. To set up T I S C, the mainland market has already issued a document that is about the setting up of a center of the T I S C. There are procedures for the nation to approve the setting up of the center. In the reply, the administration said that it had already invited the Hong Kong Productivity Council to work on it. So the administration has invited the Hong Kong Productivity Council to work on it. But what about the operation? I mean, the format? Does the Hong Kong P C have the necessary conditions for attracting more researchers in order to take forward the development of intellectual property in Hong Kong? Can the mode of operation attract people? I'd like to know more about this front. Thank you Chairman. I'd like to ask my colleague Mister David Wong, Director of Intellectual Property, to answer this question. Thank you. I'd like to start with T I S C. Our practice is the same as our countries. We were asked by the C N I P A whether we want to work on it. We need to recommend to the authority what format we will use. So we will work with the Hong Kong Productivity Council and we find it a suitable organization to follow the standard adopted by our country to set up the T I S C. We have already endorsed our recommendation to the C N I P A. We will add one hundred in addition to the current one hundred and one. So we'd like to support the development of innovation and technology through intellectual property. We want to help Hong Kong move forward. Regarding patent box, is actually a tax incentive. From the standard rate of ten point five percent, we recommend downward adjustment to five percent. We want to encourage more patents as well as research into patents in Hong Kong. Next, Mister Adrian Ho. I'd like to follow up on C E D B oh one seven. It was asked by Mrs. Regina Ip. It's about these spirit towards liquor liquor duty. The administration mentioned um different factors for consideration. I'd like to know what the administration means. What do you mean by different factors for consideration? You mentioned a number of factors have to be taken into account. So can you tell us three factors? Why don't you have such considerations when it comes to red wine? But you do have for spiritual liquor, what are the factors at play? I'd like to follow up on C E D B oh five oh. The real name registration system has been implemented for over one year. How many cases have been referred to the law enforcement agencies when you have got hold of the relevant information so that the um persons or the criminals could be brought to justice? Regarding the plus eight five two to the phone number of the caller. Well, I myself have received many calls without the um plus eight five two. I also know that some scammers can use the eight-digit phone number as a call display when they call citizens. I think the administration needs to move with the times in order to tackle the scams. For spirit towards liquor duty, we can follow up on this point with Mister Adrian Ho. Regarding the other question, I'd like to invite the Director General of Communications to tell you more information.
Thank you Chairman. After the real name registration program for SIM cards, we give the police force some information for them to take action. The police force has already got hold of some numbers to take action. The police force successfully brought criminals to justice through the real name registration program for SIM cards. There were a total of sixty thousand SIM cards, so it helped the police force in detecting cases. Regarding plus eight five two, the reason why we'd like to intercept these calls is that scammers usually use plus eight five two and impersonated public officers using the phone number of government organizations. So we'd like to block these calls, so the citizens will not receive any of these calls. When they use other phone numbers such as those of overseas numbers, these callers can indeed call from overseas, so we cannot intercept all these calls at random and out of no reason. If some phone numbers usually are considered as scams, we will intercept these calls. Instead, we will not, I mean rather, we will not block all calls. Otherwise, that would affect citizens in Hong Kong. Mister Yim Kong. I'd like to follow up on the reply one oh four and one oh eight. That's about the S M E financing guarantee scheme. The bad debt ratio is lower than the original projection. But for existing or new applications, I mean, the administration needs to give us more information. So I'd like to ask about the bad debt ratio last year. When the business environment is not stable, will there be a substantial increase in the bad debt ratio? I'd like to follow up on C E D B one oh nine. Regarding Bud Fund. Has the administration dealt with the abuse of such fund? After the first reduction, a company can engage another intermediary and the application has been approved. Is that because of the different applicants hence the different application results? What is the reason behind it? Next, C E D B oh, I mean one three five. There will be an overall increase of forty-five point one percent in the estimate of overseas E T Os for commercial relations, public relations and investment promotion as a result of the changes in manpower arrangements. There will also be operational um expenses earmarked for the operation of E T Os. There will be an increase of forty-five point one percent. I'd like to know more about this. Uh Secretary, regarding the first and the second question, I'd like to ask Deputy Secretary to give you more information. Ms. Candy Lau will give you more information about Bud Fund. For the remaining questions, we'll follow up on them with member after the meeting. Thank you Chairman. We have eighty percent, ninety percent and special one hundred percent for the S M E financing guarantee scheme. Since the launch of the scheme, the bad debt ratio are four point two percent and two percent respectively. The special one hundred percent product, the bad debt ratio right now is six point eight percent. We will have regard to the economy and the business environment. Because of the principal moratorium arrangements, I mean, they will be transitioned into partial principal repayment arrangement. And that will probably impact on the bad debt ratio. We'll keep a close watch on the situation. Right now, the principal moratorium will be replaced with partial principal repayment arrangement by the end by the end of this year. Regarding the bad debt ratio, that is the accumulated figure last year. You do have a figure, right? Our figure is the accumulated figure since launch of the scheme. For the remaining questions, you can follow up with Mr. Yum Kong after the meeting. Doctor Chow Man Kong.
Thank you Chairman. I'd like to follow up on C E D B oh eight three. That is a question by Mister Sunny Ten. The administration allocated an additional funding to support the mainland development. There were a total of two hundred and seventy activities held. Is it possible to cover more organizations in the mainland as well as those in Hong Kong? Apart from official organizations and quasi-official organizations, we can see that we have very close ties with the mainland market in order to attract enterprises and talents into Hong Kong. I'd like to follow up on C E D B oh one three. That's about the Bud Fund. Four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine cases, the success rate is no more than forty percent. How can the administration support enterprises that have
How can the administration support enterprises that have yet to applied successfully? Right now, the amount of seven million dollars has been maxed out. How can you further enhance the support for enterprises? For instance, they can expand the market to Asian markets and work hard on the domestic sales. The last question is C E D B oh seven five. It's about the S M E Export Marketing Fund. A total of fifty-seven thousand enterprises have benefi- have benefited from the fund. We need to fare better in e-commerce. Each enterprise, they can receive up to one million of provisions. But each time they can receive a maximum of one hundred thousand. Can the amount be increased to two hundred thousand dollars? Thank you.
There are three questions. I think you can focus on Bud Fund. Perhaps you can take more time to focus on that because that's what other members were concerned about as well. All right, I'll have a deputy secretary answer the question. Thank you, member, for the questions on the Bud Fund. Is it the case that with different applicants, the diff- the results will be different? It's not the case because the Bud Fund, first of all, would only have the companies apply for themselves, so they cannot engage intermediaries for the applications. The secretary will look at the applications and conduct detailed analyses. There will also be a cross-departmental working group vetting the applications. And after that, there will be a project management committee that will look through the different projects. To answer the members' questions, Bud Fund is indeed very popular among enterprises. We have seen an eighty percent increase in the number of applications. Since the resumption of normal travel, many people want to tap into the business opportunities. The success rate so far is seventy-five percent and we believe that the cumulative ceiling is adequate for most enterprises at the moment. Not a lot of companies are using up the amount. As for those that have only used up the one million ceiling, it's just zero point one percent. Most of them only used twenty thousand dollars in e-commerce development. And under the Bud Fund, we will have the e-commerce E C that will allow companies to more flexibly deploy the one million dollars. Thank you. Next, Mr. Sheng Haileung. Thank you.
I appreciate the efforts made by the C E D B so far. I have two questions. One is on one five eight on new media. For R T H K and internet media, I have s- seen that the administration has provided some figures for social media. We only have one million odd followers. For Facebook, we have only one point three eight eight million followers. That is quite few. And there are also some figures for the number of downloads for R T H K apps. For example, R T H K on the go, it is the, the number of downloads is two point five four million. And it's not a lot. Can the administration explain why that is the case? And it is also said that for some of the apps that have been shelved, the maintenance fee is just seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Does that mean the administration did not commit enough in the apps causing the failure of the apps? Next, on T D C. Let me first declare I am a member of many committees of the T D C. Many T D C initiatives are district-based or just limited to the region. Ha- does the administration have any plans to have more national events held in Hong Kong so as to bring attention to Hong Kong? Thank you. I think the administration can focus on the question for new media. I'll let Mr. Eddie Chung, Director of Broadcasting, answer that question. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'll give a brief response on the number of downloads. We assume that after people have downloaded the apps, they will install the apps. And for social media, there are people who follow the pages or the accounts and when there are any updates, they will receive notifications. For the YouTube account, we have one million followers. I don't think that is few. And if we are talking about reception in terms of TV reception, it would be one point seven percent, so it's not too bad. All right, next, Mr. Lu Chenghong. We'll have a three-minute time limit for the members that come after. Thank you. I want to ask about one three six on the expenditure of the Customs and Excise Department. The expenditure has increased by fourteen point five percent to fill vacancies. The Customs and Excise Department would have to enforce the durable commodities ordinance. And citizens are well aware of the existence of the ordinance that would work with unfair trading practices. And before when we discussed this, it was said that we should have a collective action mechanism in Hong Kong. And in twenty twelve, the Law Reform Commission has suggested that as well. And from a consumer's perspective, there should be a grace period so as to alleviate the issue caused by unfair trading practices. Does the C N E D have the manpower to study the relevant options? Thank you. Thank you. On class action. Please answer this question. I'll have Miss Lau answer the question for the question on consumers. On class action, the D O G has been taking the lead in reviewing this. The member also mentioned a grace period that should be implemented. For fitness services and beauty services, there are some practices that may be malicious, perhaps asking customers to pay by force. We do not have a timeline at the moment. We are keeping in view of the situation. Thank you. Thank you. That's the end of today's session on commerce and economic development. The next session will start at ten fifty. Thank you, everyone, for attending this meeting.